I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. At this point, I'd like to read an information from excerpt from policy eight colon thirty, Visitors Due and Conduct on School Property. The LTHS School District expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property or at a school event. No person on school property or at a school event, including visitors, students, and employees, shall perform any of the following acts: strike, injure, threaten, harass, or intimidate a staff member; use vulgar or obscene language; possess a weapon, any object that can be considered, that can be reasonably considered a weapon or looks like a weapon, or any dangerous device; damage or threaten to damage another's property; damage or deface school property; violate any Illinois law, or town, or county ordinance; impede, delay, disrupt, or otherwise interfere with any school activity or function; violate other district policies or regulations or a directive from an authorized security officer or district employee; engage in any contact, conduct that interferes with, disrupts, or adversely affects the district or a school function. Any person who engages in conduct prohibited by this policy may be ejected from school property. The person is also subject to being denied admission to school events or meetings for up to one calendar year. This time, roll call.
Shaw?
Here.
Lewandowski?
Here.
Navara?
Here.
Johnson? Oars?
Yes.
Travis? Lopez?
Here. This time, dear, we have no resolutions. We have no student reports. Next, we have an AFT report. Ms. Karen Cooper.
I really just want to report on kind of the progress over our three days that we've been in the building at the institute. Thank you. We had a board member, Navara, there. President Lopez Caniva, there. Nice of you to kind of be in attendance and kind of see what we're going through. Some good messages about reconnecting with the students, and I think it was fantastic today. I don't know any other way to put it. Brought tears just being in the building with the kids. It was a great experience. The kids were thrilled to be there, and it was great. I don't know any other way to put it. Compass was, you know, since that's new, just to speak to it, our conversations that we had today, I don't want to steal some thunder that I think will probably come out of conversations, but from being in the classroom with the kids talking about that, I think they thought that it's going to be a positive. I talked to my kids later in the classes, and they said, you know what? This sounds like this is going to be something good. So I really felt like we were off to a good start, and I felt like everybody had a general consensus that it was a good day. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
All right. ISB Governing Board Report in the absence of Ms. Johnson. Do you need to add anything, Dr. McBride?
No, not at this time.
Okay. All right. Foundation Board Report.
As I mentioned last time, at the last board meeting, Director of the Foundation had designed this. One meeting of the foundation, Dr. McBride, I would here contend the executive committee would argue there are looking at the alternative, you know, going forward because, you know, Kate really set a good framework. What we can get done, she's doing very well, we can't lose her, but we're going to use her framework. Hopefully next month I'll have something saying, I hope we have our kids better, go on more activities, stuff like that.
Thank you. All right. Legislative Report.
There is not much that is busy on the legislative docket right now after the spring legislative docket. The governor's going through in signing bills or bills that just become law if they're passed by both the House and Senate. One that is the most significant for board members is House Bill eighteen. And House Bill eighteen is the first major change we've had in professional evaluation since 2012, when the Performance Education Review, Performance Education Reform Act, excuse me, PARA, was passed, and PARA significantly changed licensed staff evaluation in the state of Illinois. I was on a committee as a high school principal at the time in 2011 that fashioned, or had feedback on fashioning a great deal of that law. So this is licensed professionals for the board, and that would be just kind of give you a list. Teachers, counselors, social workers, certified nurses, librarians, deans, psychologists, speech pathologists. I am probably sure that I missed somebody there. And what this does is in 2012 with PARA, there were four ratings that a teacher, a licensed professional could receive: excellent, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. Now, in every two years, if you were tenured, you would be formally evaluated every two years. Teachers who are in their first four years are evaluated every year. The change here is that if a teacher is rated excellent or proficient at least once, they're not evaluated for three years instead of two years. So it extends the cycle. What we'll have to do, this is going to be in effect on September first, 2022, so this will have to be a planning year. Part of PARA put a standing committee together with our union. Tony Kundari and Karen Cooper do a great job on that. That committee will have to meet. It will hammer out here at the local level, what does that mean if we're evaluating proficient, excellent? That's the majority of our tenured teachers are rated proficient and excellent, as you would expect ahead of school like ours, if they move from every two years to every three years. So that was signed into law, and we'll be working this year to make House Bill eighteen a reality. Questions? Any board member questions? Yeah, Ms. Ives.
The, I understand that, you know, how the bill works, but if you evaluate a teacher exceptionally great, and then, you know, she's not due for another, you know, tenure review for three years, what if after a year and a half, there's been some fall off and her, you know, direct report is concerned? Can they have an interim review period or not?
Yeah, there's two pieces to that, so in case you didn't hear the question for any mic reasons. So, no, just repeat it just so people can hear it. You're all good. So let's say it's a three-year cycle, but after a year and a half into it, a really strong teacher is having some difficulty with performance. There are two pieces to it. One, this is designed, and this is where we would have to do some work, loosely defined in the law, is building a more robust system of informal evaluation. So the expectation is that we're more informally and more frequently going into classes with less of the architecture of the formal evaluation. Part of that is based on research that informal frequent visits are bedding better coaching sessions for folks. But there also is a more formal mechanism to put someone back on cycle, to say, hey, your performance has really changed. There's been an event or a circumstance. We work with our union. We have that process in our collective bargaining agreement, and then in our evaluation plan, and someone can go back on cycle if that's the case. This needs to be worked out a little bit in this because the language about someone going back on cycle in this particular bill is probably something we have to tease out on the local level.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'll use the mic next time, sorry.
No, that's okay. Just so everybody heard the question.
All right. Moving on to Communications. We have none. Freedom of Information requests. You see those listed in your board packet there. All right. Next, it's Public Comments on Agenda Topics. Designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up, and I believe there is none. Okay. Next, I need a motion for the approval of our regular meeting minutes of July nineteenth, 2021.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Dr. Shaw to approve the regular meeting minutes of July nineteenth, 2021. Roll call.
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes. Next, we have the approval of regular meeting minutes of August second, 2021, which was a special board meeting. I can make that motion?
Second.
And second. It's been motioned by Ms. Lopez Caniva and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those? Okay. Roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes. All right. There's no board member expenses. Next, I just need a motion for the approval of our Treasurers' Report.
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to that Treasurers' Report? Hearing none. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Oars?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes. All right. Next, moving on to our Superintendent Update.
Well, I don't want to steal a thunder from Dr. Green and Dr. Greenan about the beginning of the school day, so I'm going to leave today to them and some of their planning. Do you want to do a few acknowledgements? Just really, in August, we typically report on the goals that the board has set for me, and just want to walk you through that, but, you know, really just a thanks to all the people that were involved in freshman orientation. It's still, to me, I've been doing this for thirty-three years. I've seen freshman orientations come and go. Dr. Green, you run a very, very smooth operation. What I appreciate the most is the personalization. Families don't encounter long lines or big mobs, just sort of handled one at a time, but that means your staff has to be there for a very long time, so exceptional job. Welcome Back Days, very similar, well-run, smooth, thoughtful. Make-Up Days as well, Dr. Greenan. Good way to get people back in the building and just all the reminders of things you have to do as a parent, you know? I just graduated as a high school parent, but I remembered fondly all the things that I would have to go through for the past five years with my two daughters. I really want to thank Tony Kundari, many of our colleagues here, really every administrator in front of you, participating in new teacher induction. One of the most diverse classes of professional staff. I really appreciate just the culmination of everybody seated in front of you had something to do with interviewing and recruiting staff, and we have a very, very strong, strong sort of class of 2021 coming in. But more importantly, I think Mr. Kundari and his staff greeted them with hospitality, with welcome, made them feel like we want them here and they belong, but at the same time valuing what they have to share and what they have to bring. So just a spectacular job. And all the people seated here, that's sometime presented to those new teachers and did a great, great day. Two days last week, Return to School Institute Days, we flipped the typical script. Usually in an institute day, the first day, you come in, you have a speaker like this. It's a day of meetings, a day of people talking at you, and then the next day is a day to prepare really for the classroom. And sometimes what we find is that in doing that, people get so much information, what really is on their mind is kids coming back to school. So we flipped this script a little bit. We started the very first day with self-management and the value of staff coming in, having an opportunity to get set with their colleagues, get set with their department, get set with their teams, get set with themselves to understand the school year ahead, a good principle for students as well. Then the next day, we did really the learning with two, with really taking a look at compass, PLCs, relationships to speakers, Dr. Lionel Allen, who I taught with at Oak Park and River Forest High School twenty-seven years ago. That's when I first met Lionel. He's about as tall as Dr. Greenan, if you can imagine that. And then with Dr. Victor Simon, who is a local resident but also a fellow superintendent. So just appreciated also Lori Christopher putting together a committee to develop those two days, so, 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 good stuff. The other thing I really want to call out that the board should be aware of, a pretty neat thing that we have going on. You'll later in the consent agenda approve, I can't remember the final number, I want to say ten, tech interns, and those are students. And so many districts have had programs where the students are the people who do the software and the hardware and the repairs on Chromebooks for students, especially in a one-to-one program, but very much limit what those students can do. There's always a great worry that if the students can really get into everything, security and software, and I've been involved in many districts where we train tech interns, but they really have no real responsibility, and they just sort of melt away. Our tech interns were helping teachers, checking LED projectors, were this morning just serving their fellow students who needed a Chromebook, had a problem with the Chromebook, couldn't have a charger. They were real employees, doing real service for our school and our district. So Matt Dusterhoff and his team has great vision, and we look forward to when we open up the tech center and library after its remodel. Very quickly, after those accolades, just my goals for the next year, five-year goals that we talked about. And what I did in this report is I incorporated your professional evaluation, my performance evaluation last spring, and wanted to do just a check for understanding with the board, make sure I got it right. So I think the more important thing than the goals in the reports that I do, for example, on student academic achievement, are the things that you wanted to see. For example, student academic achievement, you wanted me to make sure that we built on the district management group report, and then we really carefully look at any kind of delayed learning that could have happened last year. Compass is in part an opportunity to take a look at that delayed learning. We hope to bring to you by October a five-year calendar for where we're going with the DMG audit. College and Career Readiness, the vision of this goal is that all four thousand of our students walk out by 2025 with some type of college, you could almost call it certification or experience or industry credential, an AP class, dual credit, an internship, an actual license, or gainful employment. That's all of our students moving forward from 2025. You wanted us to make sure as we do that, to ensure that students in specialized programs, like special education programs are incorporated in that, that we're using the newly adopted ISBE cultural learning standards. We incorporate mental health, social emotional challenges into that, and we promote staff development. Stop me if, you know, there's a question or I'm not going in the right direction. Safety and Security, that remains important sadly. We had, I believe it was in Mexico, the first school shooting in a long time a few days ago. Of course, we want to keep students safe so they can learn, and that is continuing our work on climate and culture, maintaining a good relationship with the brand-new Chief Haring, who started today for the Lockport Police and Will County Sheriffs as well, and then, as the board knows, working with a local expert, Rich Wastaki, to educate students and educate parents about potential safety threats and things that happen in the cyber world. Kids are in the cyber world now more than ever. And then Community Engagement. Really Community Engagement, I think if I summarize what the board is asking is two important things. One, a really good relationship with our union and our union leadership, who do a very strong job challenging us but also partnering with us, working with and supporting the LTHS Foundation. But also, I think the board is interested in metrics. What do we know about our communications and what's happening with our communications? So for example, just some recent metrics hot off the press. We just launched FAQ on Friday. It had one thousand two hundred and twenty-one visits. COVID- nineteen page, it had two thousand two hundred visits. Our S.H.I.E.L.D. page, two thousand three hundred and two visits, and then the August second board meeting had two thousand six hundred and eighty-one views. So giving you metrics about that communication. Then finally, Finances. We can't have a safe or a secure district if our finances aren't in shape. You're very interested in our debt structure and providing you analysis with any savings based on federal rates, changing rates in terms of our debt structure and our facility needs. What will be our facility needs going forward, and then finally, our demographic report to kind of put together what the district will need in the next ten years. So that's my check for understanding and also, you know, sharing with the public some of the areas of doing work, but just want to open it up to questions if board members have any, and did I get it right? What you think the work ahead is for our team? Yeah. Of course.
Of course, I got something to say. First question is, you did get it right. I mean, because you summarized exactly what we outlined for you to do. Did the, is it too early? Does the change, does the census change us at all or anything like that? Or is it just, is it just those results are too early?
Yeah, you know, our demographic report has been delayed. Our hope was we'd have a ten-year demographic projection in your hands already. The census was due in January. It was just really finalized last week, so now we can actually get to the work of doing that demographic projection. And I appreciate that Jerome McKibben, our demographer who we're working with, did not want to move forward until he also had those numbers. Now, he could, because if you remember, his methodology is not so much in, you know, how many kids are in kindergarten right now in our feeder schools. He really looks at housing stock, and he looks at projections of what type of housing will be available in Lockport Township to help understand who will be moving into that housing, and then what kind of needs will we eventually see. He has some early predictions on that, but that's also an important part of his model. But the census numbers are important because they either support or distract from that, so I think that'll kind of put the final touches on that in terms of him finishing for us. And just remind the board and the public, I know that's a cooperative with our seven feeder districts as well. We're all doing that ten-year projection together with Jerome McKibben. You bet.
Moving on to our Consent Agenda Items. I just need a motion for, to approve the Consent Agenda Items.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items. Two through ten is written.
All right. It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Ives to, for the approval of the Consent Agenda Items, number two to number ten. Are there any questions to any of those? Just want to say that those old band uniforms, my daughter was a freshman when she first wore the first brand-new uniform. So that was a while.
Not so brand-new anymore.
That's, I know. All right. Okay. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes. Next, we have an Action Consideration Approval, a Contract Amendment for Quest Food Management Service Contract. Need a motion for that?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Navara?
Yes.
Yeah. And second by Lopez Caniva. Are there any questions? Okay. Roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes. We have no policy consideration. And next, we're moving on to our Information Reports for Principals' Report.
Good evening. It's been an exciting couple of weeks around here for us. As Dr. McBride mentioned, we did have our freshman orientation on August third and fourth. This class this year for the class of 2025 is approximately eight hundred and fifty students. We had about seven hundred and fifty families actually end up coming through, which we were very excited. And the remainder actually showed up within the past week to make sure that they got all of their materials, such as Chromebooks and schedules. So we were very excited about that. And today, our first day, it was a great one at the Freshman Center. The kids were excited. Our staff was excited. It was the first time in probably eighteen months that these kids opened a locker. And for some of our staff members, it was the first time in eighteen months that they opened a locker. So there's a lot of getting used to and getting back to the old routine, but it was really exciting just to see the kids. As you can imagine with freshmen, you know, coming into high school, especially when some of them are coming from classes of fifty students, to come into a building with eight hundred and fifty, there was some nervousness, but I think that the day went well. The compass period, the feedback that we received from both the students and the staff, just kind of anecdotal today, they welcomed it, and they said it was a great opportunity for them to, you know, talk with students a little bit more, make sure they understood, like especially at the Freshman Center, I know it may be different for John over here, but the Freshman Center, knowing where their buses were going to be after school, you know, talking about what it means to have lunch in high school, and then getting to know some other kids that, you know, they've never seen before. So that was very exciting, you know, just an opportunity to help the students do some navigation and some self-management, like we talked about for our institute days. So very excited to have the kids in the building and looking forward to a great school year.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. As Carrie had mentioned, the week that we had freshman orientation, we actually welcomed our new staff as well for three days that first week in August, which was great to have our new staff here at LTHS and go through three days of a lot of information for them, but also get to meet them and for them to get to know us a little bit. A big thank you to Tony Kundari for organizing that. And then we had Welcome Back Days at East Campus on Thursday, August fifth, from eleven to six. Friday, the sixth, from eight to three. 6th, from 8:00 to 3:00. And then, we did a makeup day on Monday, the 9th, for three hours, which was great to have our families and our students in the building. We had about two-thirds of our families take advantage of the online residency verification. So that just speeds the process up for them a little bit when they get here for welcome back days. And then, they're able to, the students are able to get their IDs, their PE uniform. If they're a senior, they could, they could pay for a parking permit. They go to the cashier to pay student fees. They could get their class shirt, and then just walk the building, get a good feel of where their classes are, where their locker is at. Very similar to what Carrie said, today, we had a great first day. I think it started at the end of last week when we had our staff come back for our institute days on Thursday and Friday. And then, today was just, was just a great day. We had welcome banners for the students as they arrived at both campuses. We played a little music as well here at East to have a little bit more of a celebration kind of feel. And just trying to be down, being in the hallways as much as possible, seeing the students, directing them where they needed to go. It was just a great first day. Thank, thank you to Karen Cooper for her, for her kind words and for our staff. And there's a lot of energy in the building at both campuses. And we're just super excited to have the kids back, five days a week, full day in-person learning. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our information reports, the goals dashboard.
Much like there are performance goals for myself, there are also performance goals for the district that our administrative team carries out. You might recognize the new goals dashboard. Looks a lot like the old goals dashboard because the goals have not changed. These are long-term, three-to-five-year goals or, or goals of things that, processes that we want to sustain. And so, really, this is just a reminder and opportunity for the board to ask any questions about these district goals, but also just remind the board the purpose of the goals dashboard included in the agenda, last year's goals dashboard, and then this year's goals dashboard, how we're going to know we're making progress. And then, the idea is that district administrators will come back and our building principals in October, January, March, and June, and report out to you their progress and share this dashboard with you so that you can see in real time how they're achieving these goals. The first goal relates to college and career readiness, and that is really the ownership of that portfolio is Lori Cristofero and Angela Huntington. Facilities and finance, we really centered on the amount of cash that we have on hand to be ready to handle any crisis that might be coming our way, six to 12 months. And that's Stephanie Coy. And things like the financial reports that you just approved, how do we, how do we govern and manage that? Climate and culture, those are our building principles. That intersects with the performance goal that you gave me of understanding what kind of climate we're building, what kind of culture, how are things done in Lockport Township High School. Compass will be a part of that, but also, we have a data measure. We get so much information from Forecast Five Analytics. Human resources, that's Tony Kandari. And the bulk of that goal is, is to create a staff that reflects the students that attend this high school district. And looking off into the future, what kind of professionals do we need to meet this types of students that are coming in the building? Technology is continuing to purchase and invest so that we're always one step ahead. You know, we are very lucky. Mr. Dusterhoff, two years in a row in the pandemic, was able to get ahead in terms of relationships and avoid, you know, not having Chromebooks for our freshmen. And then finally, communications. What we'd like to do is enhance student achievement through strong communications, home, in the community, with our staff, through all the communication devices that we use. We just launched something I think is going to be far more robust, something called Parent Square, which students have enrolled in, also makes it in an emergency situation. I could write from my phone right now, send an emergency alert to almost 8,000 people if we have that kind of situation. So that's the work that we're doing. I would, you know, take any questions, and the next time we'll update you is October 2021 and share with you the progress we've made so far. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McBride. Okay. Next, we have our maintenance report. A lot of things happening there.
Yeah, a lot of things happening. Well, good news and bad news. Good news is, you know, sometime we'll give the board and eventually the public an opportunity to tour our new tech hub and library. It's looking great. It's taking shape. It's amazing how those things happen. But some of the fixtures and furniture and glass that we need in there is not in yet. Many people are familiar with the shortage of materials. We are looking at a mid-September opening for that. But really, the theme of this maintenance report that I've been spending a lot of time talking to Mr. Thompson about is roofs, especially at East Campus. That roofing system is, is about 24 years old. We're going to ask our architects from DLA to do a roofing audit to see what areas do we need a total roofing project. And we'll, we'll know a little bit more about that. And obviously, roofing is something that you just gotta, you gotta keep, keep, keep ahead of. Our structural repair project that we approved in the spring for Central is going well. We're wrapped up for the most part. We had very few unknowns. We have $30,000 left in the unknowns. We had budgeted $75,000, but we have $35,000 left. Some just little bit of cleaning, priming, things like that need to be taken care of there. And then, just some, you know, things that we finished off, tennis courts are finished, wrapped up, resurfacing, some concrete sidewalks, where you have some unevenness. And then, just the importance, especially at Central, of updating ventilation. More legacy building, obviously, in this COVID era, ventilation very important. And you might have noticed the buses, Mr. Ives, to me, said one day, where are the buses? Because they seemed, we were moving 65 buses all over the place. We just did the, we did the sanitary sewer line as well as some paving issues over at our bus transportation center. So we got that done as well. One of the really great things we did last week is we did an appreciation breakfast. Quest did an amazing job. Bill Thompson, Bill Howard, Tim Russ did just a great job. And it was amazing to see that staff. And as I said in my update to you, you would just be so proud as board members. There's a lot of ownership in our facilities. There's a lot of pride in our facilities. There's a lot of tirelessness. I've been doing this for 33 years, and I'm always amazed at how, one week, the place looks like it's just thrown up in the air, and then the very next week, it's all put back together and just looks ready for students and teachers to come in. So we're very proud of our custodians, maintenance and facilities staff. Really, great job. Just, it was so nice to see them all together.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the capital project expenditure and inter-fund transfer summaries that you can see there. And a lot is going, a lot of money's moving around. But, all right. Thank you, Stephanie, for that. All right. Next, we have public comments not on agenda. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker, per agenda topic, will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. And we have Mr. John Hayes. And Mr. Ives, will you keep time for me, please? Thank you.
My reason for speaking tonight is to address basically the topic of the superintendent's letter to the parents. I believe that everyone got that. But before I start, I'd like to congratulate the board and the, and the teachers on congratulating themselves so much. Most of the parents and the students I've talked to disagree. The superintendent's letter to us was basically, the way it came off to me and to my child in school, a pack of lies. The superintendent said there's unity. There's no unity. You saw all those parents out there. They don't want their kids wearing masks in school. We went through every single response to that superintendent, to the survey, and what we got back was it was 60-40. That doesn't even come close to what I read. More like about 85-15. There's lies, damned lies in statistics. Those statistics are easy to fudge. Any first-year statistics student could have done that. That was a lie. You saw all those parents out there. They don't want masks. Neither do the kids. The kids do not want it. They're despondent about this whole thing. Hiding behind a bunch of experts to try and snowball all these parents when they see with their own lying eyes what, what's going on out there. Their kids spent the whole summer together, all of them. No problems, no hospitalizations. There's not bodies stacking up all over the place. People are, you're, you're snowballing these parents. You're doing what you want. For tyranny to exist, there has to be little tyrants all the way down, all the way down, from the top, our tyrant governor, down to all the little enforcer tyrants. That's what we've got. This whole thing has been a mass hysteria. There's a book by Charles McKay called The Extraordinary Popular Delusions. And he said, "Men, it is said, go mad in herds and awaken slowly, one by one." But you see, one by one by one, these parents are waking up to this. And then, Ferdinand Foch, "The most powerful weapon on earth is the human soul on fire. You people have set these parents' souls on fire, and I hope that they burn bright against all of you."
Okay. Next, we have Reagan Hayes.
Hello. Any parents of AP language students here will notice a particularly interesting introduction to the course syllabus, which reads the words, "Take ownership of your own education." And those six words perpetuate a culture of laziness, ineptitude, incompetence, and cowardice that runs rampant through this district. I want to say thank you to Laura Gilbert, my AP language teacher, because my parents and I are doing just that, taking ownership of my own education. I had hopes for this year that I could go to school, go to school full-time, be able to breathe, be able to look at people just like I did all summer. And that didn't happen. No matter how tired school made me, how stressed I got, I miss it. And it doesn't look like I'm going to get it back. LTHS has its share of problems and shortcomings, like its deplorable curriculum and the people who teach it. I'm a straight A honors student who takes our education very seriously. When I come here to your school, I sit in your classrooms, and I abide by all of your rules, no matter how oppressed, disgusted, and alienated they make me feel. At the very least, I expect to be taught. But it appears that there's not one area in which LTHS fails to disappoint. You all have no idea the breath at which you have casted down these kids. Every person I've talked to in the days leading up to school has been dejected by what you have decided to do to us, our future, our well-being, our prosperity, and our peace of mind. I am blessed enough to have two parents who care enough about my mental health and are willing to take the time to homeschool me. But not everybody has that. Not everyone can do that or feels that they can. All of these parents are here because they care about their kids, but some of them are here because attending a school board meeting is the most they can do. They work. They make a living. They don't have time to educate their kids. So they send them to you to be educated. But you continuously oppress these kids, and you bully and humiliate them into submission, and you estrange them from each other. My heart goes out to every kid who's going through this school year. They are far braver than I am. My mental health is far too fragile to endure the likes of another year of your antics, let alone two or three, or however long you all will decide to bury the little truth and merit that America has left. I have been appalled by what you have done and what you continue to do. I am lucky enough to be able to stand here and not have any connection with your classrooms, your teachers, or have to wear your name around my neck ever again. I am lucky enough to stand here and look all of you in the face and scoff at your gutlessness while being able to say that I no longer belong to you, and you have no power, and you have no control over me. Being without your education has brought to me more serenity than I have felt while I've been educated here. My restlessness, my depressive state last year, and the death of my motivation is all because of you sitting up there. You all sicken me. You have caused a wave of repression that you will never know. You have caused a wave of repression that you will never know because what you do to these kids is of no consequence to you. You sit there, you screw everyone over, you take their money, and you cash your checks. You are heartless. You are heartless, soulless, aversive human beings. And there will never be an excuse or an explanation to serve what you have done, what you have failed to do, and what you will continue to do over and over again. Because with bureaucrats, with all of you, the money, the control, and the power is never enough, is it?
I've been up here a number of times talking about masks, why I think they're not, they should not be mandated, why they should be optional. I'm affected personally, of course, because I've had two daughters that are getting negative effects from the mask mandate. So every time I come up here, I try to look at it from a different angle. So it's just not rinse and repeat all the time. So I have a few notes I'm going to read through real quick before I make a few other statements. So we all question the applicability of the mask mandate and where it comes from. And Dr. McBride has reviewed it a number of times. You know, it basically comes from the state. And all school districts are under the impression that they should listen to the state, or else something bad will happen, like they'll lose money, or they'll get miscommunicated from the school district status on the state level. So the CDC guidance, I wanted to cover that for a minute. It doesn't include a mandate. It leaves room for local school districts to opt out of the mask rules instead of just being bobbleheads and saying, yes, 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 yes. It continues to recommend masking and physical distancing. But school administrators have to decide how it applies to their school district based on the rates of infection, the death rates, and the number of vaccinations, and how many people have health conditions that prevent them from wearing them. And there's a lot of different dynamics to making this decision in each school district. So that's why typically, we depend on individual school districts to make up their own mind instead of just automatically listening to the state, because there's different dynamics. That's the reason, that's the thing I'm trying to get across. What else was I going to say here? So the governor's office, there's been a lot of articles on mask mandates, of course, in the news. And I don't know how many all of you read, but I try to read as many as I can. But the governor's office, they were quoted as saying this. It's, while schools are supposed to follow CDC guidance, school boards run their own school districts, and recommendations are not a mask mandate. It's up to the individual school district. So if the governor's office says that, I would think that's something that the school board should take into consideration. You have people that are immune from prior infection. You have people that can't risk taking a vaccine due to other health conditions. So there's issues here where there are people that can't wear masks that aren't even allowed to go down that avenue of not being able to wear a mask. There's no exceptions. Automatically, 100% of the student Automatically, 100% of the student body has to wear it, and that shouldn't be written that way. It should have, it should be optional for those reasons. The IEMAA, the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act, that's what gives Pritzker his powers to give emergency orders. And that's something that should be looked at as well. So supposedly, he made another one of these recently. But the issue is the word "school" is not applicable on those, on the school district level. And that's something that is being challenged by Mr. DeVore downstate in the court of law. So this isn't over yet. In my opinion, it's not over yet. What else did I have on here? Oh, and there's a new bill in the General Assembly, HB 2789. It passed the Illinois House on party lines, of course, in April, but it didn't receive a single vote on the Senate floor. And let's go through what that bill is about. It's a bill that compels school districts that they must follow the Illinois Department of Public Health, and they must follow the Illinois State Board of Education guidelines. So that was never passed. So what does that tell you? That tells you that individual school districts should look at metrics based on their school district and whether or not they should have a mask. And I'm asking all of you to look into that. You know, challenge yourselves and don't be yes-men all the time. Dr. McBride has his opinion, and you each should have their opinion.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. So I ask all of you school board members, the next time there's a vote that comes up on this, and it'll come, it'll come, research and do your due diligence before you just blindly say yes to these, to these issues. You owe it to the taxpayers, you owe it to the voters, and you owe it to the children. Thank you.
All right, next we have Jay Rodi, Roddy? Rodi.
I want to respond to the letter that we got regarding the mask mandate. We received the email from Dr. Green, and we responded. And Mr. McBride, you were on the response. And I'd like to read what we sent you, so we're completely transparent, not only with the board members, with the parents in the audience, or anybody else that may be able to see this at a later time, if people are recording. Dr. Green, in response to your letter stating that LTHS Central Campus will be mandating the wearing of masks, will you, the school or the school district, be providing the parents and the guardians of all students with an assumption of liability agreement? I did not see this mentioned in your letter, nor have I received one from you or the district. If you, the school, school district, is going to mandate a protocol, then it is only right that the district provide us with the proper documentation, assuming any and all liability for any adverse effects of said mandate, protocol, such as the bodily harm, exhaustion, sickness, illness, disease, et cetera, directly related to the said mandate, protocol, and not limited to, but also including anxiety, depression, and possible suicide, in the event that it is found is the result of this said mandate. If it is completely safe for a student to wear a mask from the time they board a school bus, attend their classes for a full day, and then return home on the bus still wearing said mask, then you, the school or the school district, should have absolutely no issue providing every parent or guardian with an assumption of liability agreement for this mandate, protocol that you are going to enforce. Please have this assumption of liability agreement ready to send home with each student on the first day of school, so that every parent and guardian may file it for safekeeping. I would also suggest that on the first day of school, so that every parent and guardian may file, I would also suggest that the email go out informing every parent and guardian that this documentation will be coming home with the students on the first day of class. Now, in the event that you, the school, or the school district are not willing to provide an assumption of liability document, agreement for this mandate or protocol, then this most likely means that you, the school and the school district, are not willing to take responsibility for any adverse side effects to this said mandate, protocol. Then in this instance, it is only that, in this instance, it is only just that you guys recall the said mandate. You see, a conscious pilot way of ruling, no one's good with that. You can't just tell people you have to do something and not take responsibility for any adverse things they may have in relation to what you told them to do. You don't get to just wash your hands of it. So what you have managed to do is you've managed to take some parents that are afforded masks, and you've managed to take some parents that are against the masks and break them apart. You've created dissension among the parents of LTHS. What you could do, though, you could probably, like we have, right, Mr. McBride? You fold your hands a lot to bring community and people together. Take the responsibility, because you know what? I believe that some of these parents that believe in the masks, they believe in them because their leaders tell them to believe in them. You guys are leaders. So whether I believe in them or not, I would truly think that the parents that want their kids to wear masks and the parents that don't want them to wear masks would like to see you guys put your money where your mouth is and take all responsibility for any adverse possible effects to these masks. If you're not willing to take it, then you need to recall it. The board members, I'm asking you tonight for someone to make a motion, for someone to second the motion, to table it, no more forcing of masks until we, the parents of the school district, are afforded disagreement. You guys need to assume the liability, because you're enforcing it. And if you don't want to enforce it, then, Mr. McBride, you need to get on the phone, probably got on the speed dial with J.B. Pritzker, and tell him to afford you guys, got it, afford you guys with the assumption of liability.
Thirty seconds.
Okay? So if you don't want to take it, and, I mean, why should we adhere to something that you don't want to take the responsibility for? It's ridiculous. Stop washing your hands. Take the responsibility. Every parent in the school district deserves that assumption of liability agreement. If you're not willing to do it, board, you need to recall it. Thank you.
All right, next we have Trisha Tabor. Trisha Tabor.
I'm not going to stand up here and force, you know, you guys to change your decision on the masks, because I think it's just a dead-ended subject right now. But I will still say this. If standing up and speaking up for my children burns a bridge, I have the matches. There is no such thing, there is no such thing as freedom of choice unless there is a freedom to refuse. I'm going to touch on what Mr. Rodi has said about the liability. In prior board meetings, it was said by Dr. McBride that they would be held liable if someone contracted COVID and then took it home and gave it to their families. While it has been proven that there has been bacteria of pneumonia found on these masks that were tested. So think about it this way. If my child contracts pneumonia because she has a mask on her face all day long, she brings that pneumonia home to me because I have several autoimmune disorders, and I end up hospitalized, are you guys going to take that responsibility and that liability? You can't have it both ways. You can't say, "Well, you know, God, like, we're not going to be covered if, you know, someone brings home COVID and we'll be held liable." But you should also be held liable, too, if I contract pneumonia from my daughters that have to wear a mask all day long in school and I end up hospitalized due to my autoimmune diseases. So there's that, something else for you guys to think about. Can't have it both ways, or you, you know, you could try to. Also, I want to say, from this point forward, my attorney has advised me to let Dr. McBride know that I am not to be contacted about any posts on Facebook, anything that you see on Facebook, because I will not be responding. If you want to contact me regarding something about my daughters, I will respond. But from this point going forward, I am no longer going to be your contact person because people want to telltale about things they seen posted on Facebook, and they cannot act like an adult and contact me themselves. Thank you.
All right, next we have Ms. Jennifer Consino.
Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are destitute. That's from Proverbs 31:8. I stand before you all once again to speak for our children. I feel like a broken record, so I'm going to keep this brief. Our fight is not to unmask the children. Our fight is to keep our children's God-given rights. Our fight is to allow parents and children to have control over their own medical decisions. Our fight is to keep the communist left from preying on our God-given freedoms, freedoms that are reinforced by the Constitution. The nation is one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. And until God says otherwise, the government nor the school board will parent my child. I look at you all today, and I pity most of you sitting there on your high school board thrones. You have no idea what it means to be leaders. Thanks to all of you, I see two of you that fought for our kids. You know, and I'm going to keep those two in my prayers and hope God takes favor on you. And to all the others that have continued to fight for your own skin rather than the rights of our children, well, I'll pray for you that hell isn't real, because you are certain to be turned away at the gates of judgment on Judgment Day.
All right, we just need a motion to enter into closed session to confidentially discuss litigation when an action against, affecting, or, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed session. And that's under chapter five of the ILCS 120/2C 11. And the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public to determine its validity under ILCS 120/2C 1. I will make that motion.
Second.
And it's been second by Dr. Shaw. Bro call.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
My voice is too light for you?
I guess so.
I guess I do need a mic.
Ladies first.
Yes.
Rudondowski?
Yes.
I?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yes.
This time we'll end at one, and we will have like a five-minute recess before we enter into, before we go into.